I have a few people who have missed. First of all, I would like to recognize the presence of Mr. J. Blackley. Mr. Blackley is the second vice president of Ula. I would also like to recognize the John F. Law president, Mr. Paul Hassan. Recognize Mr. Hassan. In our best of life, we have Yassa and Yassam Red of Gulepoa. And then, I would also like to recognize, uh, 6, Tumali George. The president of the Southern African Association of PA Tower with the honor of taking over. We are about to officially begin this program. This evening, I want to add my cool MC, my theatric mind. Once all your African American African American associations of PA Tower with the honor of taking over, we are about to officially begin this program. This evening, I want to add my cool MC, my theatric mind. My theatric mind is the one here for the African American Association of Pennsylvania. So, at this point, I would like to call up Pastor Simeon. Pastor Simeon is the pastor of the PA State Church here. He has a lot of things to say with him. He's not going to do anything.
Please, everybody, here, when you're glad of us, allow us to be here. Give me praise in our place, there's nothing in our family. Those of you that are under our medical supervision, please, do not change. Everything is God's law and everything can be done. That's why I'm saying he gave the alpha and the omega. It's the beginning and the end. Whoever comes in his hand is able to protect it. Whoever still in his hand is able to protect it. Matter of course, we are because of love for our nation. We are come to first turn it back to what comes to Liberia. Thank you for the great blessings that we continue to restore upon us as a nation and as a people. And we so very thank you for all of us Liberians. They are here to have other shows tonight. It can't be here because of this. But because of love perfection, we want to be part of the conversation. Love is our ultimate source, it's worth everything. And as far as the president now, after he was sitting back there and he was here and I said to him, there are further declarations that are being published out of great events in women of love from sitting in Liberia. And as they only, as one of them, that into love our service because of his nation Liberia. Every fulfilling word that have been declared upon our nation will not wait and disturb or not perish until everyone comes to power. I thought the chairman would say different to that. And we have a prayer, we two pray, and all of us will pray together. We are the nation that we all have a certain party core to believe in God for us to get there. And our prayer is that let us share that together. Let somebody be found that we don't get it. And that we two pray for, and we all will pray together as Liberians. I know that more are protesting this country to greatness. But we really part of the process, we really part of that greatness in this and the law have blessed before. So if that is the desire, glory and prayer for our nation that everything part of the process have been taken to Liberia to that place of greatness will have been a part of it. They will do that in the United States if you can. Like every way in feeling, Father, the country of God that will be a part of this great nation that you are testing for us. And I can say it is a nation flourishing with all its needs. In the name of Jesus, I may not know like it. But our mommy and our meal of hope that we never take part in it. We thank you, Lord, that we will not die in full of time. We will not die in the struggle of love. We will ready to partake the greatness of our nation. And so far, we thank you, God, tonight for your faithfulness. We thank you for the nation that we suffered to choose in West Africa. We thank you, God, for the nation that your hands are born. With all this struggle, with all the ups and downs of experience, we thank you. We thank you for this time, all the need of God, even our speaker and all the management and community leaders, so long our friends and partners that have come to be a part of this conversation. It's all about love building our nation. It's all about the way for us. We pray, God, that you will give everyone here, Lord, a understanding how everyone here in mind is set for what that is all about our country, how to forward and make it be part of the conversation. We are not here for high demand. We are here for our soul that we can discuss love, the platform that we have set for the next place of Liberia. And so that we can be a part of it, we are, we thank you for our speaker. We thank you for the team that you have here. We thank you for our leadership in our community, Lord. Father, our friends and partners that have come to join up to be a part of this conversation. We pray that everything that we do here today, let it penetrate our nation, let it penetrate our people. In Jesus' name and everybody will say, "Oh, bless him." Thank you, Master.
This program is being livestreamed by Joseph and Nancy, they two on their private here. We make a double presence of former president of the African American Association, Tony House. Welcome, all of them. You are welcome to the podium, the honorable president of the African American Association. For excellency, uh, seniorly, Prof. Akomatia. Ladies and gentlemen, the speakers be here shortly. I would like to start. They will draw the last of the post before the speaker be here. So if you can hear us, we ask them, yeah, probably it's because we see you here in the meeting. Father, we would welcome you, Lord. I want to do a thank you for taking all your time to meet with us today. To listen to the state of the things that are here and give us a community in Pennsylvania. We are wanting to have our speaker of Liberia, the representative here. Representative, in the house or in the, uh, the honorable passenger from the city of Kofa. Who slowly coming in. As you can see, our vice president and security details are waiting now to give me some more. Thank you. I know that every time, it starts with a big start. We, we can't think usually that every time. So we say, "God, Lord of people." So ladies and gentlemen, the speaker here, perhaps, so we can be sit too much. We're expecting one of the experts to ask all the representatives and give a statement to you for us to give. Thank you, Jose, again, for coming, with this invitation. I ask you to put up our best attitude, not on our guest. And our questions, please be moderate. And typical of the time, it's been. I told you, I think that we need to speak. You don't have some time, you know, but I said, "Oh, God, people get money with this thing." We are trying to be careful. Okay. My president, distinguished guests, the 56 speakers. Pick up the 56 matches, let your partner come, I hear a hard one, one I need, move on. For example, my president, uh, in each other's welcoming, everyone, we should go continue that. Hello, everybody, and welcome. Thank you for being here, Mr. Speaker. This is the speaker and, uh, from the room, Master Professor Prof. in the service center here. This is Jerry DeHort. While the speakers be here, we are wanting to have you all and welcome to this session. It's a morning to be a great, a fantastic, a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful country, alright? And so, for the likes of the vice speaker, I would say, with this, this is a speaker, so I'm coming to you. Today, we will be having a session, question, ask this question, a session that the speaker speaks. Perhaps you will indulge in the pageant. Because we have people bothering me. And we want to all have, listen to the answers that we give you. So, Mr. Speaker, let me first welcome you to our state, to the state of PA. Um, of course, everyone, the president say, you don't have a president, but the state, um, they've gone for the past two to three years now, not another, no, two years. He just got elected last month, between and I back into office for the next two years. To be working to do this community together in the best way possible. We have some challenges, but we're working on it. Um, simply, next to this, Jerry DeHort is this James Department from the leader board. Uh, and I have parents and representatives of organizations here in August, who are moving to here for you. So, we want to welcome you all again. This is Jerry, a priest, recently of LNP. As those who don't know, I think that this is since the year 1978. Uh, I happen to be the first to see the president. And we should welcome everybody to sit there, wanting to talk. We feel that waiting for all the additional stipulations here and other places, we have been advocating for that president. We turn on the population differences of person twice. Inclusion of youth and other relations of the socialists are a good thing of position. We have also activated with the all, the Apple, which is the all African American collective for our citizenship. As a matter of fact, the program was founded in Pennsylvania, in which I was the guest speaker. And we wanted to take you on for past now, while we were so much of a different time, so proud of the Lord. So include us all into the bodies of our people. And so we feel a lot of contradictions to our country to go to another day. The one main thing our citizens are asking for is the dual citizenship inclusion of jobs. And having everybody way back home, living in peace and contributing to the country. The main thing is the vote. They understand voting is one thing our community have been talking about. I've been implementing, implementing, moving and use international projects. We support the families of refugees, affected, uh, suicide affected, and war violence. We've been contributing to the community as co for advocating for the state and other representatives for immigration crisis. We have had other innovations here, as you know, I'm speaking as a central state. So we are all expected here inside the ways of the government. Um, of course, we would rather use financial support for all organizations in this state who follow C2 organizations that are undertaking projects and individual projects in Liberia. So we also been having a leadership conference. The way to all understand our leadership role, because we have so many organizations in the state of Liberia. And sometimes, it gets kind of sad, you know? They don't know each other, we don't go back with each other. And so, Mr. President, Mr. Speaker, let me, let me say, thank you and welcome. Thank you for coming, for making this time to speak to our community and giving us the message of us. We know, we know, we're here for the G A, we are excited. Because we are hoping to see that Liberia will be a part of this great council come up. And we know, we are hopeful that it will happen, but we want to know how it will work. Because we can have peace amongst ourselves, if we can be advocate of peace and brothers and and go around. And so, if we go to any reunion, and go to the party, this is why we feel a huge, huge, huge thank you. Thank you, fellow African American president. Well, our next guy here, firstly, I have Miss Booker, the honorable, uh, Professor Prof. is the speaker for the 55th Les Major Public of 1956. And now, this is a pre-version. Our next item here is the introduction of the guest speaker, by Mr. Mogo Timber. Give your applause for him. The honorable speaker of the 55th, uh, master of the region, we talk of Liberia. Uh, the honorable president of the African Association of Pennsylvania, by excellency, Madam Senior Puma Komatia. The honorable vice president of the African Association of Pennsylvania, and we're trying to be, we're not dancing. Uh, the honorable, a point, the honorable Dean Wetz. A intellectual, black here to, uh, a property professional, a representative, national director. Uh, Interage, one of the directors of the Super Office Star, my manager, my speaker office here, present. Uh, executive board members from the African Association of Pennsylvania. Uh, organization president. Uh, promoting volunteer organizations, executive director and official here. Champion Association, president, executive director, he is present. All of the honorable citizens. And the honor of himself, one of the right here, present. The right, the right to living, the living, after happening, is simply the biblical number one member of the spirit, the apostle, pastor, and our father in the law of the biblical apostle of the international, Monroka Nasi. Uh, hardworking, patriotic citizens of Liberia and veteran journalists, along with media professionals here, present. Uh, four officers and other candidates who have come to live this city, happy. I see the few, uh, the youngest mentor of the Provo Liberia, who deals with poverty, content. And we're here, is he a president, Monsieur Monroka Nasi? Uh, ladies and gentlemen, fellow citizen. The speaker is a philanthropist, hardworking, patriotic citizen of Liberia, who have worked in every sphere of our country, intellectual, who is passionate about the intellectual general Liberia. Making sure that I can lead this calling in the direction where they can pass law that will transition the next movement to the other country to the direction where it can live in peace and harmony. Uh, the speaker is an educator, is a counselor, a lawyer. He is the executive director and founder of the International Law Group. Uh, that's like starting his career before he came forward to serve for the capacity. Before he became a family speaker of the people of the United States, the speaker for, uh, the children of divisionary, for understanding the vision of a relationship by country and other instability of the individual system. Uh, the speaker is a pastor to enjoy beautiful life, who has been blessed with service. And the capacity. Uh, the honorable speaker is a humanitarian, who is always ready to give to whoever comes to him positively with direction, either at, for educational purpose or for health reasons. Ladies and gentlemen, fellow citizens of Republic of Liberia, ask you to please stand on your feet as welcome to this podium for a cross interaction and discussion with the honorable speaker, Honorable Jane. Jane, for the two of our honored people of Liberia. Our say. Our say. Who do, who do, who do, Speaker, who do?
Thank you very much, thank you very much, have your seat, thank you very much. Uh. If I'm dragging a little bit, please forgive me, uh, I'm on Liberian time. And, uh, it's in the wee wee hours of the early morning in Liberia. Uh, it is a pleasure to be here. And I want this to be as interactive as possible, so I will not talk too long. Uh, because we want to entertain your questions and your concerns. And we wanted, and we want to be able to answer them as honestly and as forthrightly as I can. I will only highlight three issues which concern you and allow you to go into the rest of the other issues that you are concerned about. Uh, the first is the issue of dual citizenship. Uh, as you recall, in the 55th, we had a good coalition that came together and passed the dual citizenship bill for the first time under the theme, "Once a Liberian, always a Liberian." The, that bill was what I thought was a virgin bill. It went to the Senate, the Senate put down some restrictions. And as you know how democracy is, compromise had to ensue. Well, Honorable Musa Bility reintroduced another version of that bill, which is the, the Immigration and Nationalization Act of 2024, which removed those restrictions. Uh, we've since passed that. It's going to the Senate, we ask you to do any lobbying effort that you can to make sure that the Senate passes the bill as is, or in our legislative parlance, we call it concurrence. Then we will move to the, the executive, I believe, if the clean bill, he will sign it. The issue of voting. We have asked our various organizations in the diaspora to present to us our diaspora voting plan. We have not seen it yet, I'm sure the various organizations are working on it. When we do, we will be able to do whatever the assessment is on it. And I assure you of my support in making sure it comes to pass. But let's remember a number of things. Diaspora voting doesn't only mean American voting. There are Liberians in Nigeria, there are Liberians in Canada, there are Liberians in Europe. So whatever the plan is, it has to take into account that the Liberian diaspora is dispersed all over the world. And voting centers and voting stations must be accessible to all to meet constitutional muster, uh, when we do that. So once we see a plan, we'll begin to work actively on it with you. The third thing, which is one of the most important things that give you influence and give you leverage in Liberia, is your economic power. Uh, we said a few nights ago that you remit about $800 million to Liberia every year. That's more than the national budget. Maybe you need to begin thinking about channeling, uh, those remittances through one or two sources that will give you power and direction on how you do your remittances. And in regards to that, we are, we have a committee from the legislature that's working on the Liberian input and export bank to be able to buy capital to allow for Liberians to be able to export products, uh, to the US into parts beyond. Remember, uh, the Obama era, Agua program, Nigeria, Ghana, and other countries take advantage of those exports. Liberia have not, so it's about time we work on those. So I will stop here and leave the firing line for you. I don't know how we, we're gonna organize this.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Uh, we will have remarks and then the question and answer, so.
Okay. Remarks from who?
Remarks, not from us.
Okay.
Uh, we'll call on Honorable Park. Because we know your question and answer.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Liberians. Honorable Speaker, and members of the delegation. Honorable representative, I'm honored to represent Ula to welcome you here to this great state. Especially, Mr. Speaker, we want to congratulate you for attending our convention in Atlantic City. You proved what we heard about you, that you are the people's speaker. You didn't shy away to meet with your people. Ula is geared towards changing the dimension of Liberians' approach towards Liberia. During the foundation time of Ula, it was engaged in advocacy, which was right and which was achieved. Now we enjoy multi-party democracy in Liberia. Now we are steering Ula in the direction where we can form collaboration with Liberia and the Liberian government to help to improve our country. I'm glad the speaker just mentioned about how we channel our remittances. I'm honored to inform you that Ula has put into place how the diaspora Liberians can manage to transmit money to Liberia by using Liberia's own medium. I'm glad the speaker mentioned that we are going to engage you, Mr. Speaker. We give us the idea on how we can implement that, because our desire. idea on how we can implement that, because our desire, self-worth from the way, and treat ourselves, how Nigerians treat themselves, so that our money goes to Liberia, when money goes to Liberia, Liberians will have a portion of it, and Ula will have a portion that it can reinvest in Liberia. My brothers and sisters, I would just want to encourage you tonight to take your time and use this opportunity and use it wisely, how we engage our speaker, you know the value of speaker in United States of America, and this is a great opportunity that we have to chat with our speaker and exchange ideas and hear from him, so that he can hear from us, before I take my seat, I just want to take this time to recognize the owner of the house, Reverend Dr. Simba, Dr. Simba, would you put your hands together for the man of God, please? We want to thank you very much, because your church is always open to Liberian activities, and we are proud of you, this is the role that I play in Jersey, to use the church and develop our communities, because the church has strength, so ladies and gentlemen, I'm honored was to welcome your speaker, this is your speaker, speaker, these are your people, and enjoy yourself, I thank you very much.
All right, uh, we, we really wanted to hear from one of our own, Representative Jerry Yopwa, uh, you know, so, uh, Honorable, could you give me some, please give it up for him? Jerry Yopwa is the representative for District Twelve, Bossavado County.
Thank you, thank you, Honorable Speaker, Honorable President, Mr. Barclay, Ayuda, Mr. VP, Sander Johnson, member of the speaker team that came along with him from Liberia, community leaders, friends, want to say thank you for having us this evening, I'm happy to be back home, I'm happy to be back to Philadelphia. And I want to use this, neither to address, extend thanks to all of you that supported me during the process of my election. We won, and we could not have done it without your support, all of you sitting here, two some maybe did support us, and we appreciate all of you, and we have been working for the last eight months, and we will do our best, because we were given a mandate from all of you Liberians in the diaspora, and our citizens who voted us in Liberia also gave our mandate, and we know our, our three character of responsibility, we are carrying on those effectively, and we, we ensure that you will be proud of us, so we just ask that you keep us in your prayer, and I'm inclined to say to this evening that I believe our interaction with our speaker will be very friendly, and will be very truthful and honest in our questions, and our speaker, who is my boss, who I've known for the past year, he's a good man, and he will give you truthful answers, so I want to thank you for having us, and let God bless all of us, thank you.
That is our proud son of Philadelphia, our Honorable Jerry Yopwa, we now call for the podium, the Chief of Communication, Honorable Dean Wilson, and Alfonso Yonah, who will preside over the question and answer session, welcome.
Good evening, good evening, we, we just wanted to make sure we, so we just wanted to make sure, first, we just want to thank you for coming out, I mean to have left church first Sunday, most of you, give us a round of applause, I mean you guys have come, you've represented, I thought I would just make it as possible for everyone to have a question in, uh, the brother will continue to, to moderate, but we would just ask that, you know, we avoid too many follow-ups, a question, a follow-up, and let's just not have a dialogue, so the brother will be doing, he's done an excellent job, he will do so, and I wanted to say to a dear brother and friend, uh, Jay Fanati Kofa, we spent twenty-four years, Madam President, our president, who's united the community, let's give her a round of applause, and for everyone just coming to be a part of the Jerry, a son of ours, who's now, you know, representative, and I understand Fred Gwyn will be going next, you know, so we are just keeping it light, and I know we have a very respectful group, Fred will raise some money to support you, and, but I do thanks, and thanks for everything, thanks to everyone for coming, so thank you very much, thank you.
So my name is Alfonso Yonah, as our brother Dean Wilson has said, and I will moderate the question and answer period going forward from here, uh, he has set some ground rules, which is basically, please ask direct questions where possible, limit the commentary, you know, don't give a thirty-minute speech before you ask your question, you know, uh, so that we give everybody, if possible, the opportunity to ask questions, uh, Mr. Speaker, we want to thank you for coming and for unveiling yourself, uh, to our people to ask questions, um, I, we appreciate that you understand that that's a requirement and part of your job, uh, so having said so.
Before we do that, I have one mistake, I want to correct myself, I'm sorry, one more. Unless you can get us interactive and relaxed as you can, everybody drop your shoulders a little bit, I try to drag in this evening, someone I wanted to introduce to you, the speaker does have a bigger brother, and to my left is, his brother let him stand, we dragged him from Maryland here, every time he had a speaker, right, that a guy who used a funky head when he was growing up, you know, speaking co-founders give a round of applause, often we focus on the twaddle, and we don't focus on the upbringing, that's the big part of the speaker, I made that mistake, and I just want to correct it, sorry for interruption, thank you.
So the time has passed, and, uh, so what we do, we speed up the process, I do have a list here of people who want to ask questions, but I'll also be going around, so if your name is not on the list, you still do have an opportunity, uh, to ask a question, Mr. Speaker, the list is quite long, so brace yourself, now, what do you want to do, do you want to come on, on this, on the, so, I'll turn this one, I'll leave this with you, uh, yes, to this one, so as I said, I'll begin with this list, and then if you want to put your name to the register, and I'll, 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 I'll continue.
Honorable Speaker, I want to thank God for your saving and allowing you and your enter right, and my question is, what is this fifty-fifth session of the African Constitution that you were achieving, if they are requested, if they manage our legal resources? While they're shaping the project, they're not paying your attention, Mr. Speaker, thank you.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the first question?
A first question of the fifty-fifth session on the team, if they are the most, if they are the worst, they manage to enter the job in the interest of our workers. And the second one is, while they're shaping the project, they're not paying your attention.
Okay, uh, thank you very much, you see, this is the, this is the problem with change, where we do things the way we used to doing it and cover it up, it looks normal, when you begin to expose it, then it looks corrupt, the problem is, there is nothing that the fifty-fifth has put into place that is anti-change, okay, what you're seeing, and what you're noticing are all of the things we're exposing to change the system, in order to make the system more transparent and more accountable, the fifty-fifth has called for, and in process of an audit, the budget process you talk about, who knew about debates on the floor of the, uh, on the floor of the, the House, on the budget, nobody, who knew about off-budget expenses, nobody, who knew about shifting in budget, nobody, I'm sure your question is not that these things never happened before and we have invented them, the issue is, we are exposing them, so we can begin to put in a system to correct them. I'm not sure why did the shift in the budget, they not claim my attention, if you notice the budget presentation, uh, video, which is passing around, I'd be glad to share it with you, when the Ministry of Finance presented the budget to me, I asked for several things, the first thing I asked for was the budget performance report, the second thing I, I asked for was the off-budget spending, and the third thing I said was, we are not going to touch this budget until we investigate the budget alteration claimed by some, all of those things were done, it is in our request and our insistence, that we will not move the budget until we receive off-budget spending, that's how you know about the off-budget spending today, so I think we have to be careful, and not shy us away from making the change and exposing the system by blaming us for what we expose, okay, otherwise, it's easy, we could have made the same deal, or off-budget spending that is made year after year after year after year, uh, the off-budget spending for twenty, so far, was fifty million we have arrested, but I bet you you do not know that last year, twenty twenty-three, off-budget spending was ninety-seven million, okay, you didn't know that, but yet you're accusing the fifty-fifth of being the most corrupt, when we are the ones exposing the system, so I think we should try and, and understand that we came here, what the fifty-fifth want to achieve, is several things, number one, greater independence, and you have that, by and large, two, more accountability, we are working on the issues of transparency and accountability, and the more we expose the system to you, the more your eyes will be open, please don't blame the messenger, let's work on the message. Next question.
The next question will come from Salma Nene, Mr. Speaker, Salma.
Okay, who do you think, uh, thank you for coming and taking up the time, I am talking on healthcare for Liberia, and because I work in healthcare and I'm a traveling certified practitioner, so my question to you is, uh, about primary care in Liberia, uh, because we have a larger population, uh, more than, uh, a lot of people, and we want to know how are we, um, managing primary care, because we know now that primary care prevents a lot of diseases, preventing what diseases need to keep the population safe and healthy, so my question to you is, what are we doing, uh, to, to, so that we don't, um, fall short of diseases that are easily managed by your primary care doctor, that's my one question, my next question to you will be, um, electronic health records, so make it easier for, for one person to move from one, um, from Neyman County to Sinalo or Wengi, so that all the records can be in one place, so that it's easily accessible, um, sorry about this, and my next question is, are we regulating medical, um, medical medications in Liberia so that we ensure, um, the medications are qualified, um, like good medications, thank you very much.
Okay, you have a basic question governing healthcare, uh, I would admit to you, our healthcare system is not the best, one of the things we try to do, and we try to, uh, impose on the Ministry of Health through their Oversight Committee, is the public health issue, I think some of us owe enough to remember Francis Popo Bleedie, and, and the, the public health programs that existed during those times when we grew, grew up, we are trying with the healthcare and the funding available, one of the things that is very good in the international community is support for healthcare, what we need to have is a system, and that is what we don't have, a system of what you call primary care, a system of secondary interventions, and then acute care, in order for us to move forward as a country, to have a healthier country, a, 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 a population that live longer, those things we have to put in place, and I got to, to tell you, our Health Committee is working with the Ministry of Health in the twenty twenty-five budget to begin to do those things, we have varying and uneven healthcare system around the country, you have in these, uh, communities, you have some clinics that shouldn't even exist, but those are the primary care of most of our citizens, so we have to, the Ministry of Health started to go about neighborhood to neighborhood, we've tried to make sure they are upgraded or they are closed down, on the issue of drugs, the Liberian Medical, and, no, I'm sorry, the, the Drug Control Agency that is responsible for regulating drugs, do the testing, they do the standardization, and to make sure the drugs coming into the country are indeed have the necessary efficacy that they, they say they do, next.
All right, thank you, next question, and before we go, uh, to the next question here, I have a few things here, one, let's try our best in living our questions, and one question, because we have a very long list, uh, today is Sunday, a lot of people have to go to work tomorrow, so tonight, even, um, the other thing is, what I will do is, I will ask the next four people who are on the list to kind of line up in the bed and there, so I'm going around like that, because that will help to sit down, um, so the next four people have Morris Manet, Big and Bully Winfar, Big and Bully Winfar, Miss Rose Joy, and Bobby Beach of Cops, so the three, the four of you, just come here, and all right, first, next person, Morris Manet.
Thank you, Honorable Speaker, for your principal service, and you are welcome.
Thank you.
History is not made, history is, not what is printed or painted on walls or in textbooks, history is they will embrace change, we are now oblivious that there are no, we say thanks to the problem we have faced within our country, my question would be, Honorable Speaker, will members of the lower chamber of the Liberian Legislature consider reducing benefits and salaries, and stopping the forty-five thousand United States dollars being used for tax pay of money in your interest, the government, what there is no voice, spark regulation, my second question would be, what is in that the government is not regulating public schools in the country?
Okay, this is the question of reducing benefits for the fifty-fifth, and I told you that I will be as honest with you as possible, uh, I don't see that happening in twenty twenty-five budget, uh, but there's no vehicles in twenty twenty-five, there's no forty-five thousand dollar vehicle in twenty twenty-five, it's, it's, uh, one every three-year expense, why? The legislature in the fifty-second created a transportation mechanism that was about, I think, fifty dollars per day for lawmakers' transportation, on the days that we go to work, when you add up all of that fifty dollars per day, it comes to around forty-five thousand dollars, that's where the forty-five thousand dollar figure comes from, I'm from Grand Cru, the vehicle that would take me to and forth in Grand Cru is a Toyota Hilux pickup, that pickup duty-free runs around forty thousand, I do not believe that where the government is providing vehicles for executive branch, the legislature should be exempted, what we did was, we kept vehicles, okay, at forty-five thousand, except for President, Vice President, What we did was, we kept vehicles, okay, at forty-five thousand, except for President, Vice President, Speaker. We see now in the news, in violation of the budget law, vehicles are being purchased by the executive branch for ninety-eight thousand dollars or so. So that is another way, another thing we're going to investigate. But I do not know, and I do not believe that reduction in benefits, especially car allowance, will be achieved in this legislature. Remember, unlike some in the executive branch and the judiciary branch, there's no housing allowance, there's no scratch car, there is no other kinds of allowance. Lawmakers do not even have operational budget for their offices. So the lawmakers is, is the lawmaker is running his office from his salary. What, what we should be looking at is operational funds for every one of the offices. They don't have that. So I'm not sure they will vote to further reduce car benefits, especially those that come once every three years. Um, I'm sorry, I didn't write down the second question. The, the Ministry of Education does regulate public schools. They, they have a regulation system, regime in place. Uh, uh, it's fairly effective from their point of view, so I'm not sure what, um, the question was meant to accomplish.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The next person is, uh, B K Bully.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, my question is simple. Every other year, we have medical mission, who are like, who are came. Also to introduce myself, I'm a very talented, maybe a pride, I mean, living in the primary care place, want to present. But the question that I'm asking is, the talent is that we have from the beginning, that we always say our nurses and doctors are prejudiced. Then when we reach to Liberia, we are there for doing something. It takes four days for Liberian women and doctors to say, okay, you can practice. But we say they are prejudiced, uh, a month before we are going to next term in February. The question is, how can we get help when we reach? Because our nurses and doctors, they are there like the last time, and the other day was so angry. She took it out before she could get temporary lessons. She says she can, but I'm thinking she will come back to the states. And we, and we sometimes, three, over three hundred persons, they are right, they think this is a problem. My question is, how do we get our brother from there, but
Okay, my suggestion to you is, contact my office. We will put you in touch with, uh, Honorable Julie Weah, who is the Chair on Health, and she will try and help with those interventions. I'm particularly, particularly familiar with, uh, what you're talking about. My wife is a healthcare practitioner at JFK. Uh, there was a team that went to, to Liberia and they spent almost three weeks in a hot, in a hotel, just trying to get license. I think if you're doing it one way in trying to get advanced licenses and you can't, contact us in the legislature. Uh, Honorable Weah, she has pretty good relationship with all of the, the, the agencies in the hecs, health sector, and we can try to move those things forward. That's what our constituent services are about.
All right, so next question is Mr. Rose Joy.
Good evening, Mr. Speaker. Uh, I represent today the kids that are hungry in Liberia, the Zogo, the mother that is sick and don't have nowhere to go, the hungry in the country. I represent those people today. So my country, my, my question that you will be, Mr. Speaker. Tourism has proven to be the significant contributor to global GDP, generating revenue and attack and investment. What is your administration effort to promote tourism in Liberia as the tourism is critical to economic growth, job creation, stimulation, and development and promote culture? What is your administrative process?
That's a good question. So, Honorable Bernard Benson introduced the National Tourism Authority Bill. Simultaneously, the President sent us a bill in that regard. Uh, what we're doing is, that the bill, when us seek to take tourism out of the Ministry of Information and Cultural Affairs and have an independent tourism authority so that we can begin to look at our key areas of tourism in Liberia to buttress that industry. But principle upon which, if we're doing that, will be our infrastructure. We still have to build more roads, we still have to provide more services in areas that will be attractive enough for people to come to Liberia. So the start of the, the tourism bill, which the executive have presented and which a lawmaker has also tabled on the floor, we think will begin the process in twenty-twenty-five to, to put Liberia in a better position to begin to take care of our pristine tourism industry.
I have another question. Um, how do you plan to encourage education, application, and training into Liberian school curriculum to equip you with necessary skills for the
Okay, there, there, there is this concept going around into several bills called the, 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 the Community College System, which is used, uh, in the various counties as a means of developing an agricultural system. But one of the things we have to realize, and one of the things we're trying to work on, is mechanized farming is the fastest way in which to generate growth and development. So what we are going to do is, once people realize that, the Ministry of Agriculture, Work, Ministry of Education will be able to put in place whatever, uh, system or program there is to ensure that agriculture meets education and results in the benefit for all our people.
Thank you. Um, I want to remind everybody, I have exhausted a very long list. So my question, let's, uh, limit our questions and commentary to the question. Next, uh, next few people, Bobby, Mr. Crawford, uh, you'll be the next, Miss Sainte-Trope. Best man, Julie. As a T set for Julie. So, uh,
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Welcome to Philly. My cousin Jerry, I saw him walking out, but he's here. Good to see you. My name is Bobby, Chuck Crawford, and we fought to sit on the top. My question to you, Mr. Speaker. Exposing the mafia system of government is a good thing for offering solution is actually in the best. Liberia is the eighth poorest country, and even I, recording expenditure makes up over fifty percent of the budget that the government has. And those are positive, not prerogative, the, the executive branch, the government to initiate referendum, so that we can have a fundamental reform. But what is your office doing in that direction? Because the system is broken. We can protect it all we want. We can, we can see all of the things that we want, but have bad system needs, or we actually have to do something about it. So if we try to just keep doing the same, oh, and oh, that really defines insanity. So what is your office doing to initiate a referendum so that we can have this ridiculous salary? Because Liberia is a poor country. Well, it's not a poor country, it's just poorly managed. People come in, see the system, they're comfortable with it, and they want to go with it. What is your office doing to initiate a referendum so that we can stop this bad management of the system? Thank you.
Okay. Uh, I actually not sure what kind of referendum you're talking about, but I'm not sure a referendum is required. What is required is a change in the system of the way we manage our public resources. Um, and we, we, we ask you, we encourage you to pay more attention at what is happening at the legislature. We realize and we're working on those, uh, infrastructure that will be necessary to give you as much information as possible. The primary fiscal tool of Liberia is the budget. The budget system in the past, and it's not this government or the last government or the government before, from the beginning of the fifty-fifth, has almost been like a mafia system. What we need to do is change the way we conduct our budget exercise. The first thing we did this year was, during the budget process, if you notice, we slashed the legislative appropriation, legislative spending. Okay, uh, in twenty-twenty-two, with off-budget spending added, it was ninety-two million dollars. It's now hovering between thirty to forty million dollars. The other thing we did is, when the budget is passed, let me, let me tell you how complicated and I will not characterize it, how interesting the budget process is. If you see the budget book, it's about maybe three, four hundred pages with all those little lines. So the legislature does not go line by line. What we develop in the future is a program budget, so that the budget attacks programs, not lines. Because we do not go line by line, it is left with a committee in the past, or maybe four or five persons, that will sit down and go line by line to determine, after we pass the budget by categories, right? A committee goes and determine line by line what goes in those categories. That is where the fundamental problem starts. So we've expanded that process. In expanding that process, we said, okay, we're going to have a revenue committee, which we just set up, and a expenditure subcommittee, so that one committee is not looking at then we're going to have what is called a budget advisory committee. Why do we do that? Because if you have five people working on the budget, you're more likely on collusion. If you have thirty people working on the budget, not all thirty, then we agree to steal from the Liberian people. Okay, that's the first step. The second step we need to put in at the legislature, in which we have initiated, we have signed a contract with the GAC, is a system. Okay, one of the things that happen in Liberia is, when you do audits, the audit must not only identify that somebody has committed a crime, it has to identify the loophole and the weakness that needs to be corrected. So what our system audit is going to do is, is point out the weaknesses, which is very weak in our legislative, uh, financial management system, so that we put into place the appropriate system so that every citizen will know how much dollar is spent number one in the legislature and what is the process behind that procurement. The second thing we would do is, we have asked our Ways and Means Committee and our Banking and Currency Committee to look at our public financial management law. The PFM law takes legislative power and give it to a non-elected official, the Minister of Finance. That's why you see the movement of money with our legislative knowledge. That's why you see expenditure in certain categories with our legislative knowledge or approval. My position has been, if we cannot tell you, if we pass a budget and you can play in it any way you want, then what is the point of us having budget authority? So we are going to take back a lot of the budget authority given to the Minister of Finance, okay, during the fifty, fifty-second and fifty-third, in favor of a more expensive approach that involves the legislature. Okay, so what happens? You know, you know, when you're moving money and you're moving money for nefarious purposes, you won't feel your people involved. If you have to come to the legislature, there are just some expenditure you wouldn't do. Let me give an example, all right? In off-budget spending, it is okay, it is appropriate off-budget spending when an official dies and you take money for their burial. I mean, you didn't expect that person to die, right? It is not appropriate off-budget spending to, say, purchase a vehicle. Because you should have known that this vehicle is getting to its useful, useful life and we can budget for that vehicle in the next budget cycle. So those are the kind of things. We must define it. They're, in defining what you can or cannot do in off-budget spending, there must be legislative authority. The House of Representatives, as we say in our democracy, has the power of the purse. We delegated that power of the purse to the Minister of Finance. And then in some cases, and I'm not casting a special or accusing anyone, there's collusion between some lawmakers and the Minister of Finance to rob the public purse. Okay, so the more people you get involved, the more legislative authority that is required per the Constitution, the better you will improve your budgeting process. If you improve your budgeting and your financial management process, a lot of what you see is not going to happen.
Sub-quick suggestion. We'll take like three questions or four, then before you come in.
Sure, sure, tell him.
So here's what we're going to do, guys. We're going to take three, I'd say four questions right now, and then the speaker answers. So another four, and then the speaker answers to speed up the process. What's that? So there will be no debate here. The speaker is an intelligent man. He's taking notes. I consulted with him. So I have spoken to the speaker. The speaker is taking
It's okay if they want to go one-on-one.
The next, the next question will come from, uh, Miss Sainte-Trope.
Let him ask a question one-on-one.
Uh, Honorable Speaker, welcome to Philadelphia. My name is Miss Sainte-Trope, President of the United Civil Association in the American California Valley Chamber. And a former member of the EPS. My attention turned to the process of the EPS personnel in Liberia. As a professional security personnel. I want to ask, you said you went to your office, and there were no reprints. Is it true?
Thank you. Next question. Best man, Julie.
What's your name, sir? Sir, you know, please don't try to strongarm us here. We talk about time to put on our clothes and come to see you without a speaker, so we appreciate you gave us some sort of respect, right? Thank you very much. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Mr. Speaker, thank you very much for having us. I can permit me to begin with a quote from Coleman and Cresson, nineteen, nineteen ninety-nine, for the explanation of poverty, which states how much poverty a country has is largely determined by the policies of its government, unquote. So, Speaker, thanks for acknowledging that over eight hundred million US dollars was spent by diaspora Liberians as medicine since last year. What I found appalling is you urging the diaspora community to expand its contributions beyond remittances, encouraging investments, business partnerships, and tourism for the purposes of jobs creation and sustainable development. However, the twenty-twenty-four US Investment Climate Report highlights corruption as a major barrier to investment in Liberia, noting its pervasiveness in areas like government procurement, customs, and taxation. That's it. And in addition, the Duas Citizenship Act that you guys want passed, which is discriminatory against the very diaspora Liberians that you are asking, because we cannot vote via absentee ballots, neither can we make decisions or hold strategic positions within government. So how do you expect us to leverage our economic and intellectual contributions as the brain drain of our country? That's it, Mr. Speaker. Lastly, contemporary research shows that Liberia has the second lowest intelligence quotient, which is a measurement of what's evident to reason. A classic example, you came a man, you came a boy, I will vote for you. You know both, you don't know both, I will vote for you. Second lowest in the world. We also have one of the most rescued populations, and we also have one of the most hungry populations. So we definitely have an education and food crisis. Mr. Speaker, you justified legislative projects that's over eleven million dollars. You've had one point five billion just for a week of city feeds for you guys. You've had one point five billion just for a week of certificate fees for you guys. You also spent over four million dollars on cars. Can you kindly leave one social protection program for the people that you govern? Whether it's for the homeless, the mentally healthily challenged, whether it's providing homes or school, or school feeding programs, Mr. Speaker. How do you guys feel, you're not sick, you're not driving nice cars? And as my last question before I get the microphone off, is it true that you have seventy-two thousand dollars in your budget for just entertainment? Just that borderline? That's it, can you please? We have to wait. No, I'm not gonna give you the microphone. I'm not gonna accept it. I'm listening to the speaker, you're not gonna accept the room, Mr. Speaker.
Let him finish.
I'm listening to you, please, sir, thank you. No, the room was changing the bell, it's not gonna, it's unfair.
Okay, the first question.
As best, as best as possible, what you heard and you can answer it, please answer.
The first question was about the EPS. The, the first question was the EPS, Mr. Toba, I believe. Um, we are doing all we can to resolve this EPS issue. I myself disagree with the form and manner in which the EPS officers were treated. I'm not a security expert or personnel. Uh, according to our EPS director, they found about two hundred plus persons who were not qualified or went through the process of coming to the EPS. That's his judgment and he decided to let those people go. The question now is, they carry guns before, what do you do with them? That is one that we have had continuous discussion with the executive branch. We tried in the recast to do something, but because the recast space was tight, the Senate took it out and the conference committee did not retain it. So we are trying our best to resolve the EPS officers issue. Part of the resolution is not to go to Capitol Hill and take gun out of my car and shoot my tires. Um, but we were trying to resolve that, um, as much as we can. Um, then the more interesting question, now that yours was interesting, was very interesting. Uh, I had a list here that I tried to, to write down, when a general, how do you, how do we expect the diaspora to leverage? We expect the diaspora to leverage because the diaspora, you are Liberians. We also asked you, give us a plan. Tell us how you see diaspora voting would occur and then we can work on something together. I agree with you, I believe the, the, the ultimate bill, or do I say the same truth, that was passed, was discriminatory in his form. That's why I said we have resubmitted a bill, uh, responsible mobility, that indeed, uh, remove most of those restrictions. We're gonna continue to work through that. Low intelligence quotient, I'm not sure I can be blamed, or the legislature can be blamed for that. I think we need to develop one thing. We need to look ourselves in the eye and develop standards and hold ourselves to those standards. I was shocked when I went to an educational conference chaired by Honorable Room of Quea to learn there are eighty higher education institutions in Liberia that have been accredited. When I was growing up, we had Cottontown and L U. Now, when you say eighty, it's zero, it's astonishing to me. So who are we graduating? A lot of times, people can't even read and write. We have to be honest about that. We have to go into our system and we have to write our, uh, restructure our educational system and hold people to stand up. The other thing we have to realize is not everybody will have a degree. So we will have more of those vocational and technical training centers and please for those of ours, our, our population that will not be able to get the degree, but will get valuable skills to make jobs, to, to be able to get a job. Um, yeah, yes, so let me finish this list that I had. Legislative project. I think legislative project is the most misunderstood or it is most miscommunicated. So here's the system we met. The first thing is, you have to be fair to lawmakers. The legislature in democracy have three cardinal responsibilities. Lawmaking, oversight, and I think I'm missing the third one. Representation, thank you. The Liberian constituents have added a fourth, okay? They, they, everything. They, they, when, when, when they love, when they, when the constituent wife get pregnant and she's about to go deliver, she's actual tool. When, when, no. But, but, boss man, I'm trying to answer the question. I'm trying to answer the question to get to your so, I, I'm trying to answer your question to get to your social protection, right? Take the big change when I lay, anything I miss, I will ask it, please let you sunny. So when, 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 when the constituent father dies, you have to bury that, that person. When the constituent, um, child needs to go to school, you have to pay that tuition. That is the pressure that the constituents put on their lawmakers. That is unfair and we gotta teach our citizens, that is not my job. The first time you tell them that is not my job, your opponent is gonna make it his job so he can remove you. Let's be frank, this is politics. So the system is gamed by the constituents and the people, all politics is local, the people will get what the people want. And, and this is where legislative project come in. We met a system that say, every time we pass the budget, you know, everybody walk away with fifty, sixty thousand dollars. You know, every time executives send bill, everybody walk away with ten, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars. People go on the internet and say, oh, yes, we received twenty thousand dollars and this is what I'm gonna do with it. We said this is wrong, okay, let's not do that. So what we do, we give, we allocate in social development, or what we call economic empowerment, of hundred thousand dollars per district. And you are restricted to using this money on four key areas. Health, education, welfare and infrastructure. This fund is managed not by the legislature, it's managed by an executive agency that is subject to, uh, auditing by the General Auditing Commission. That is a better system than giving a lawmaker money to go in his pocket and he determines what he's gonna do with it. If there is a system better than that, I'm willing to, I'm willing to entertain it. But let me tell you something. The most you will see in even development across the country is in the districts and in the legislative projects. What happens? Let me tell you how the constituency works. I worked hard and there's this thing they call Universal Access Fund. I love it, the, the, the Ministry of Telecom. I said, in this place in Greencrook, there is no, uh, telecommunications tower there. Can you please put one there? They put it there, the people started using phone, everybody were happy. When the tax came for election, you know what they asked me? What have you done for us? I said, but yeah, the tower there, they said, no, that government project. Okay, they, they would now, they want to see me, take my own money and spend it on something before they can say, yes, our lawmaker gave us credit. So I gotta work credit money that I pay for now to build schools in our district. Because if I told the Ministry of Education, go in and, 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 and build a school in Jembweti. The, the, but he says, okay, he says, yeah, but are the government building our school, they're not you. Okay, it is a mindset thing, okay? That's what drives that. So I'm looking for a way in which we can have legislative spending in our district that is more transparent and is more accountable rather than putting the money in our pocket. So if the legislative empowerment is, is not the way to do it, then tell me one way and we'll do it. Boss man, you don't know, let me finish, let me finish, you were talking about. No, 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 hold on, I, I will answer that. Certificate fees, it is not true. So one point five million dollars.
Mr. Speaker, thank you very much. Listen, we, we got everyone, thank you, thank you, Mr. Best. We are scheduled for five to eight and we have about fifty more people on this list. So what I beg we do is this. We can only accommodate one question, we got fifteen people, right? Instead of staying to eight, then time is up. Ask the speaker who has another engagement to be with us until eight-thirty. So here's the solution.
Let me get nine.
Okay, you wanna make it nine, fine. So this is what we'll do. To exhaust the list, the moderator will come in. Please concisely ask a question in one minute. And Mr. Speaker, if you can do us just three to four minutes, that would be helpful. So we can exhaust the list. Everybody here came to hear and to be heard. Mr. Moderator, let's do one minute question and then let's do two or three minutes. Thank you very. Mr. Juru, you are not recognized, thank you.
Well, I'm familiar with this year. I, I'm, I'm familiar, I said one of your question. Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Speaker.
So it is not true that we spend one point five million dollars for one week. I've heard that before, that's a spin, it's not the fact. Here is the fact. The president call, the, the, the procedure is, when the president calls us back, because we are on break, the executive branch will pay for our coming back. Okay, that is the procedure. In May, the president calls us back. The monthly payroll for the legislature, that's us, our staff and central administration, is one point five million dollars. That is the one point, well, boss man, you know, when you lawmaker, you got maybe forty persons thinking on you, you gotta pay there. You know, you're not paying there for your salary, you're paying there from the, 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 the budget. So that's why that one point five million is. The second time, the president called in and said, look, we want you to come back because we want you to do a recast. Can you guys make a sacrifice and come back? And the legislature agreed. They made a sacrifice, said, okay, you know what? Because we gotta do this recast, we gotta shift some money to there. Who can pay to come back? There was a time where employees came, said, we're gonna protest to the speaker car because we want, and, 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 and our certificate. We got the president's signed proclamation. You talk about intelligence quotient. I had to go and explain to them. The constitution say, when we call ourselves back, we sign certificate. When we sign the certificate, we send it to the president. Issues the proclamation, that's not the president calling us back, I mean, us back, that us calling ourselves back. So we're not gonna get paid. However, what we'll do is, we'll find something for you, so you can be here and help us. That's what happened with that one point five million dollars. The first round was in May, which the president called us back and he paid that. The second time, we came voluntarily. Four million dollars for cars is not correct, the car numbers were two point two million dollars. Um, no, but that's what I'm telling you now. Social, social protection, we pass, we pass the domestic violence bill, we are funding that. I told you the legislative project, a hundred thousand, you are both, uh, 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 community of social protection money is in there to spend it per district. The reason why I like the legislative project is because all that money will not be spent in Morovia. Okay, in my district, in, 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 in district number two in Greencrook, if I get a hundred thousand dollars, when nobody looking in Morovia, and I spend it there, they will benefit too from the national power as the people in Morovia, because everything gets spent in Morovia.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Speaker.
No, let me address, the last thing I gotta address, you say seventy-two thousand dollars in my budget is for, for, for entertainment. Let me tell you, that's the only thing we gotta adjust with, we gotta do with the budget. So I'm sitting in my office in my budget, I'm gonna say, uh, Mr. Speaker, I say, yes. He said, I have bad news for you, I say, what? He said, your budget line is over, you have spent five point nine million dollars this year. I said, what? He said, yes. So we had to go in the number, I said, I don't want. I'll try to come back and say, the speaker spent five point nine million dollars, but my budget was less than two million. So let's go in the budget line. They shift the money for cars in the speaker budget, they shift the money, everything in the speaker budget. We try to have an accounting procedure now to ship them back. That seventy-two thousand dollars we saw for entertainment was not for entertainment. It was used to pay travel expenses for lawmakers who have international obligations, like the Inter, uh, Parliamentary Union. And you see a lot of lawmakers will be flying around in Europe, in Africa and what have you. Anytime they need money, we shift to the speaker line and we give it to them.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Um, Mr. Setro. So it's my understanding, it is my understanding that the speaker has time constraints and we have a list of about two hundred and four people that needs to be exhausted. Unfortunately, we might have to cut this list down. But what we're gonna do, we're gonna insist on one question per person and no commentary. If you start commentary, we just take the microphone from you. We have to be disciplined enough. There's speak, so I've also been informed, uh, which is a suggestion actually, that if anybody has a question that doesn't get answered here tonight, you have an opportunity and please write your question down. Write your name on it, put your contact on it. We'll pass it on to the speaker's, uh, people and the speaker will respond to you if you do not get your question asked tonight. The next four people are Isaac Setro, Paul Hassan, Stephen Bablo and Brown Nefan.
Yeah, uh, uh, Mr. Speaker, my name is Isaac, I'm the Tomo Setro. I'm the executive director of the People to People Campaign for Peace and Democracy. I interacted with you at the Grand Group Program here last night. So I, I, I'm here again, I'm from Atlanta, Georgia, to, to carry on education. My question is, yeah, my question is, I think the, the, the budget, the Liberian budget is a source of corruption. And the reason I say the budget is a source of corruption is because when the budget law is passed, why should twenty million dollars be added to the budget? That's a fraud. And how many of you can work together? How many of you can work together to make sure that when the budget law is passed, additional touches cannot come into the budget? How can we work together? And I suggest, like, if we open up the legislative branch, making more transparent, why, Isaac Setro, you and brother, if you go on the, on the internet and see how much Nanticoa is making, and see how much Nanticoa is making, he, he, the money he getting for car will all be progress, so what's your point?
My name is Paul Hassan, chairman of the Generalists Club. Welcome, Mr. Speaker, Emery Tz Yopar, welcome. Mr. Speaker, as you are aware, corruption in Liberia is what is bugging our country across the three branches of government. Before you, we have Tylo, we have Luque, we have Chambers and it's you. What are you? Speaker? How are you different, Mr. Speaker? Because in this time, you are the speaker, how are you different? Please explain to me how are you different?
Thank you, Mr. Stephen Bablo.
Uh, thank you. Mr. Speaker, to be brief, I, you were the deputy speaker in the fifth day four. Now you speak up in the fifth day five. My question is with you to the audit reports. According to the PFM law, I do not intend to lecture you about the PFM law, you are very impressed about that law. Because you made the law. The PFM law says that all the reports be, uh, committed, the PCA committee hearing.
P A C.
P A C, right, thanks for the correction, P A C hearing within ninety days. According to G A C report, it says, there are three, there are three hundred and fifty audit reports before you in the legislature. And you're supposed to hear that within ninety days. My question here is, what do you have to say about the reports that are before your decks? And how can the report be exhausted within the time frame?
Thank you. Final question before, uh, the speaker begins to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Welcome to Philadelphia. Mr. Speaker, I have got one simple question for you. I have one simple question for you. The late leader passed in Liberian's vision business policy. Business is set aside for Liberian only and that law have been passed, Mr. Speaker. That law are not empowering Liberian businesses. No businesses are set aside for Liberian have been given to foreigners. And you two are testing, nothing happening and nothing have been done. How can you solve the problem?
Alright, so no, so the speaker will answer the issue again, we'll take the next four questions.
Okay, uh, the budget is a source of corruption. I'm not gonna debate that, that's true. Uh, I said, how we get, how we get from there to transparency is a question of a budget accountability and transparency mechanism that we have to work on. 20 million. Sometimes these things are not necessarily corruption. It's just process, right? So what happened was, the executive branch discussed and decided to move 20 million from debt to healthcare and education. Because after the budget was done, there was a realization that public sector investment was almost zero in the budget. So they moved that money. Procedurally, that was not correct, but did anybody take 20 million dollars to eat it? No. Uh, so it's a question of process. Our, our, our old lawmaker from the 52nd Samuel text, he said, you know, this is a regular occurrence. When they pass the budget, the executive legislative leadership go and make some adjustments. Maybe that's the way to do it, but nobody is eating the money. That was just a process issue. So from now on, we're gonna make sure when we pass the budget law, nobody, and I mean nobody, can do any shifts in the budget law with our legislative approval. And that is the way we use to get rid of the corrupting project process, or at least the way we start to do that. Uh, how are you different? Then, I'm different. Maybe I'm not very effective. I explained how different I am because I have tried tonight. What did we say? We said, this is the first time in the history of the Liberian legislature where we're gonna do an audit. We committed to that, all right? We're gonna start with a system audit and then we're gonna go on to a real audit. That has never been done before. We talked about the budget process being opened up. Never before have we had open debate on the floor of the Liberian House about passage of a budget and those things inside the budget law. Never before we've had that. Transparency and accountability is what we are putting up for ourselves to make sure that any budget we, we, we deal with, starting with 2024, going to the recast and now 2025, we are gonna continuously have more eyes on the ball than used to, okay? The secret chamber that used to control the budget no longer controls it. We are gonna open up that process and it's gonna hurt. It's gonna hurt because the way people did deals, the way you did appropriations, no longer is the case. People would expect that those legislative leadership, all of their pet projects are funded. I can tell you, when we did 2024, I had asked for 150,000 dollars for the renovation of Sasta High School that had not been renovated for 30 years. And I thought it was in there, my colleagues voted it down. Why? Because the process was not, oh, gentlemen, Yawba, this is a budget for me. It was a process of open debate and lost the majority on that issue. Sasta High School is not gonna be renovated. Hopefully, we will do it in 2025 if I can convince my colleagues. That we're gonna design the legislative process so it's open, transparent and accountable to all of you. PSC reports, I don't think it's physically possible to do all of the PSC reports in 90 days. Giving the weight of it. So what we're trying to do is give some time, budget constraint. The, the, the PSC runs through about 700,000 dollars every year trying to do these reports, these audit reports and get it on time. Uh, we are constrained budgetarily, we are not gonna increase the budget. We're gonna try to give them more time to get these reports done. Liberian business, this is one of the things where the people are accused the government of corruption, but they don't wanna be accused of corruption. The reason why a lot of times the Liberian businesses set aside do not work is like you're selling to the foreigners. Okay, you go to that foreign extreme shop and say, you got sharks, even bright, went to school with me, doing very well. The Lebanese come here with their capital. All of a sudden, the open extreme shop has better package. When you go behind the Lebanese man, he married one Liberian woman, who said that hostile. Okay, what are you gonna do? Are you gonna say, no, it's not your show? No, this is a fraudulent transfer, even though that your husband and, 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 and rip that up? This is the system. So people try to game the system when they get to Liberia. And the problem is, capital, they come from wherever they're coming from with capital. The little Liberian, you know, even have been struggling with the extreme business sharks for years. Okay? How you, you do that? I think maybe more enforcement mechanism, but it's not that people are deserting now. It's that when you go and approach these businesses, they have Liberian partners who they need on the business is African Liberian. Next question.
Thank you. Next for Bangali Trawala, Cecilia Dixon. So Mr. Trawala, yeah, Mr. Trawala was saying I was jumping over his name. How can I jump over somebody I didn't even reach there yet? Go ahead, I mean. Bangali Trawala, Cecilia Dixon, Cholo and Andrew Smith.
Thank you, Honorable Speaker. Thank you for coming to engage our community. Started with Lula, our official, up now, still engaging the community positively, which is good. My question is directed to peace and reconciliation in Liberia. Just a bit, I wrote something on Facebook, I asked a, uh, a little question. I said, does Liberia qualify for buy for, uh, senior council, non-permanent seat? And some failure, it was somehow not patriotic statement, but it wasn't so. Mr. Speaker, I've been following the history of Liberia since our war. There have been a lingering problem in Nima County that is trouble charged, that have been going on forever with the two branches of government named police and society, the executive and the judiciary. The legislature have been weak on it and it is a national security issue. So my question is, you are a human being, the more, uh, uh, legal, minimumary speaker in our town, the higher you. When you sit there and see such a thing going on again, the first branch of government not paying any attention to it when other branches are going to Sasa for their food or whatever, interesting, they find fit. So that's my question. I feel if a father cannot rule his home, it should not be available. That's where my question came from, so Liberia qualify. So the question is, when you, as a legal minded person, lawyer, sit there again and don't require, don't sit peace for our country? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and welcome to Pennsylvania. And welcome, Honorable Yawba, to this great city of Brotherly Gulf. My name is Cecilia Dixon, the president of William Substance of the Lower Valley Incorporated. Um, my question to you, Mr. Speaker, is, first of all, I was in Liberia quite recently and, you know, went around and see the way people are living in Liberia. So my question is, what are the specific steps that the government is taking to address economic challenges and improve the quality of life for citizens, especially in the rural areas?
You're welcome to Philadelphia, uh, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you for the information I provided about over 800 million dollars from the diaspora being related to Liberia. It's a reflection of the financial strength of Liberians in the diaspora. Currently, there are conversations, there's a conversation that we're on between few Liberian business people to advance a project to the government of Liberia. To reintroduce, because we heard in the past, uh, where we had the so-called Congo rule, they had a bond and municipal bond that government take on not taking a project. Liberians, the bond would be sold to Liberians to do direct investment, A, in Liberian economy on a national level instead of the individual, while other people are doing individuals. And in the process of this project, questionnaires have been sent out to seek the opinion of Liberians. And the concern is the law that we have in Liberia there with. The corruption is high. So for instance, if you want to build a bridge from Bapas across to Galanville and the project costs like 30 million dollars, instead of going to China, you sell the municipal bond to the Liberian investors with appropriate interest that will be approved over at 70% of time and then do that. But in the absence of the legal system being fragile, corruption is high. As a speaker and being a lawyer, if that project goes through an architecture, is advanced to the government that come before your debts, what contracts can you build in order investors, I want to take on this initiative?
Thank you. So, uh, Mr. Speaker, you have some questions to answer, but there's also a suggestion here. This is a suggestion, um, this morning. So even though her name is not on the list because she's not here, I just wanna make that suggestion to you. She writes, I would like to suggest that all of the house, members of the House of Representatives and Senators contribute 2% to 5% of their monthly salaries towards the development of schools that is within their districts, uh, districts that you represent. If each and every representative does this, relatively slowly, our schools will get better. Um, yeah, so that's a suggestion. I mean, she, she, she did a commentary, she has entire background. Um, she's been helping with training teachers in Liberia. She took somebody to train teachers out of the Monrovia Consultative School System in nearby other counties. Uh, and she said the roofs were falling, the ceilings were falling and it's horrible. And that's why she's making this suggestion. I don't know if you can force your colleagues and yourselves to do it, but I guess you can press upon that. But that's a suggestion and then you can go ahead with your response. Uh, Jerry, Jerry is making his contribution already, 5% towards schools in his district. Go ahead, Mr. Speaker.
All right, the first question was about peace and reconciliation in Nima and just opposing executive and judiciary manipulation. I'm not sure, I agree with the premise. Um, but one thing I gotta say is, I'm a supporter of the War and Economic Crimes Court as a way to end impunity in Liberia. I believe when we see that impunity is ended, you will have a way to, to ameliorate and end these kinds of skirmishes. At the same time, I believe President Ellen Johnson Salih has established a commission to look into this and I promise you, I will look into it and revert. Uh, economic challenges, yes, the land crisis between the Muslims and the Nima people. Yeah, I think it's the political ramifications that everybody look at. I will take a look at it. Economic challenges in the rural areas. I'm a rural lawmaker and it is no question poverty is grave, especially in the rural areas. And that's why I say to you again, for whatever reason, I have convinced you that legislative projects are a bad thing, rethink it. To allocate in every per district, who the lawmaker, if you decide we are gonna spend 100,000 dollars a year in each district, the economists will tell you the economic multiplier effect of that. In most times, the government engages in development activities mostly surrounding Morovia or the Koomu area of the president. Only way you have to spread that around. Imagine if there was a construction project in my district that people who coming from rural are not qualified to bet in. But the only people betting on that construction project are people who are from my district in Grand Crew. Imagine what it does for the small guys that do construction in that area. So these are the kind of things you do to, this is how governments stimulate and drive economic activity. But somehow people are convinced, people, oh, you know, some, one of my favorite networks that have never liked me said, oh, Speaker Kofa, I have your own construction company in your district. Yeah, when people say those things, my line people character in that fashion, they are believable. So it, 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 it means you against the district, I mean, the project. But it is easily ascertainable. When these projects are left, go see who are the companies, go see how the owners, go see how long they've been in business. And you'll be able to make a determination. But I'm telling you, legislative projects are the one of the best thing for equal development across Liberia. Otherwise, you leave it to the, those who are more powerful and those who are many. Mosorado County has 17 lawmakers, Grand Crew has only four. Whether I will defeat Jerry Yawba then to be able to move some money from Mosorado County to Grand Crew County, I gave you an example. In the 54th, I wrote a letter. I asked for 591,000 dollars to my colleagues. I asked what I wanted to do with that money in my district. And most of them came and said, look, you know, um, I mean, you know, you are one man who can vote for whatever you ask. But if we give you 591, you know what my constituents will say? They will come and say, ah, in honorable, Kofa able to get fire right now, the 1,000 for his district. And you can't get nothing, you are worthless. So it's those kind of trade off. They will come and say, everybody across the board get X, there is gonna be no complaint or nobody voting against mine because he wants his. So that's why we said, do not let anybody lie to you about legislative project. They, they do two things, is social protection because it provide economic value and it develops the country in an even fashion. Uh, 2% to go for schools. Okay, so I built schools, six schools in my district in six years. That would have been 270,000 dollars. I think in six years, my salary may have been 5,000 a month. So I think, don't hold me to either math, it will be 360,000 dollars. It is not necessary to task the lawmaker. The lawmaker does more with his salary in the district than the government does, except for recurring expenditure. They really do more. And sometimes, you, you know, Jerry then, sometimes he come to the office and say, hmm, my man, Speaker, if the hard unit you are looking at, I was gonna put my 48s out. The pressure is not easy. All of a sudden, the Liberian public has decided that they will give the executive branch a free pass. The more powerful branch, the branch that exercise all of the resources, we give them a free pass, we focus on the legislature. You're the prime branch of government, we deal with you, okay? And these lawmakers are seated every time, concerned about what's happening in the district. Fire happening in, in, in the district, they running there, they looking for mattress, they looking for clothes, they looking for things. Flood in the district, they looking for ways to, to locate people. These are the guys and girls on the front line of government activity in Liberia. I don't think they're looking for tanks, but I think sometimes the criticism may be just a tad bit unfair because people not looking at it, they look at the salary line, oh, they making too much money. One lawmaker may make five something, a cabinet minister may make seven. Who goes to the cabinet minister to? The cabinet minister has one constituent, the president of Liberia. As long as the president of Liberia happy with him, nothing, he doesn't even have to open his door to you. So sometimes let's be a tad bit fair in our criticism. Next question.
Um, so. Uh, uh, so one of the people who asked the questions, he has a, my, I skipped his question, which has to do with government building.
Bones, bones, oh, sorry.
I, 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 I would, I would take you so much for those one question because I'm a little bit. I, I, you know, it is true that the ecosystem, uh,
I, I, you know, it is true that the legal system, the financial system is not that sophisticated, but it doesn't mean that you can do it. Let me tell you this, the idea of bonds are a great idea. The central bank every now and then issue T bills. Do you know who the largest purchaser of Liberian T bills? Nigerian banks. Nigerian banks. The reason why I had to, I had to kind of recast budget, okay? The reason why we had to recast the budget is we had to put an additional forty million dollars in the debt we owe to them on those T bills. So why couldn't it be you? We're never going to default on our obligation, on those bond obligations. So to say, oh, we can't do it, yes, you can do it, start by buying the T bills when they put it up. Start by using your eight hundred million dollars so that Bureau can owe you. And I tell you, they're not going to run away with your money because the IMF can't hear you. Before you get in the IMF program, you're going to pay the Nigerian banks. Because you know what happened? Let me tell you, you know, I always take responsibility of this. I'm a new speaker, the president called me one time, and we got to his house in a budget discussion. And I saw that there was sixty-nine million dollars going to the Nigerian banks. And there was no money in healthcare and education, all of the recurring expenditure. That's where the whole twenty million dollar business came from. We say, you take twenty million dollars, you move it from the banks. And then afterwards, they took another twenty million dollars and move it into healthcare, education, IRA, and setting valuable public sector investment, okay? So imagine all that money went to those Nigerian banks. They, they, they're crediting, the government can owe, I mean, the Republic of Liberia can owe you. So I don't think it's a bad idea to develop this bond scheme. I think it is backed by the full faith and credit of the government of Liberia, which the central bank does an excellent job. And Nigeria, I should tell you, they make a lot of money from those T bills. The many of the T bills come on the market, they sweep them up. It's all those Nigerian banks, they sweep them up. So you marry yourself, owe it, and what happened? What is sweeping it off with? They're sweeping it off with your eight hundred million dollar remittances. You send any money, they buy your bonds, they owe, you owe them. Whereas you could use your own remittances and buy your own bonds, and Bureau owes you. So I think it's a system, there is not a likelihood of litigation resulting. Most people will not allow Bureau to borrow additional money if we owe or default on these obligations, and we are not inclined to. So I encourage our mechanism that develop our own system in Liberia. And this is not like the PRC for, so you're really scared.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So here is where we are, guys, ladies and gentlemen. I've been informed by the speakers' people that is supposed to be leaving at eight-thirty. It's currently eight-twenty-four. So real, and we also need same comments and all of that to happen, except the speaker decides that you will give your few more minutes, which is open to him to decide. So that's where we are, sir. Are you, are you willing to, what, the people said eight-thirty, eight-twenty-five? Are you willing to?
I, I thought we said nine.
Nine, okay.
Yeah, let's go to nine, maybe Tiffany needs to nine, we will do.
We came close, thank you.
Yeah. And the other thing is, please see my COS, take my number down, ask my WhatsApp number. I'll communicate on WhatsApp, you have questions, I'll answer them. I get about maybe a thousand five hundred WhatsApp messages a day. So if I don't get to you the same day, I will get to you sometime during the week.
Yep, thank you. So again, you heard it, so if you don't get your question, you don't get the opportunity to ask your question, please write a question, give it to me, we'll pass it on to the next user. Andrew Smith, Jonathan Williams, Ambassador Momo Taylor Jr., and Morris Gassama.
Quite so, I would like to say thank you to the Liberian Association of Defense Department. Madam President, thank you very much for the thorough meeting. And, Mr. Speaker, thank you for coming to visit also. My question is just simple, one word. I've been to Liberia a hundred times, and I see that Liberia make more money, and we, the parents that live in America, we've got to pay way more school fees to people who in Liberia because we have other families. And Representative Foco talked about it in one press conference. Private schools supposed to reduce their school fees so parents can be outstanding during the school because somebody gets somebody from Grange that would come to Liberia, Morovia to go to school, and you can't make it, guess what happened? The child will end up setting for you to make the end of living. So if Mr. Jerry and you can please answer this question, why is it that there is no piece of legislature to talk about this for us in Liberia?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, my name is Morris Gassama. I've never been a CD Shen, and I've never supported CDC, but I like your leadership, and I support your speakership through the social media, and I like you, I support you. If you happen to be the head of the CDC ticket twenty-two-nine, there are a lot of awesome gratitude towards you. I see you today, thank you.
Thank you. So it was Andrew, it was Jonathan, then Jonathan left. And so we have Gassama, we have now Morris Taylor. From Momo Taylor.
All right, Honorable Speaker, I'm now asking a question. Because before coming here, I read more detail about you. My name is Momo, I'm working on my second PhD at Penn State University for mechanical engineering. And I run a five-one-one C three that is helping, that has collaborated with almost one hundred and sixteen universities and colleges in the US through the Department of Education to bring students here. My only concern is I want to build through the office of the President of the Liberian Association of Defense, come over to your office, that we continue to experience this increasing poverty from the US Embassy. Those students who will recruit, they give you full scholarship from different universities, but when go for the interview at Embassy, they are always denied. As I speak to you, I've had to send a transcript to several of you, just go for interview. I want you to make look into that. The right Embassy is sweet on qualities, and forgetting to know the democratic diplomatic connections and democracy. And the support Liberia have given to Ivory is just what I want to. So I really want to appeal to you, we are willing to do that. I came from a very poor background, and I went to Japan, and I came to the US. I don't want to just stay here, benefit and close my eyes in Liberia. About six days ago, we deleted six part of medical supply just to bombing country. We are expecting another forty-four continuum from, from gay with medical assistance. We want those things to help our people, not because I'm not interested in quality, I'm an engineer. I work on car with my hands, but I really want you to set a conduit through your office that we can be able to channel these things that somebody can call in the with the Embassy and stop denying peaceful Liberia who are using for better education. We keep the country, we want to look back, we not service, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Speaker, do you want to go before we?
Yeah, sure. Private school tuition too high. Could maybe some kind of regulatory regime that caps, I think there is. But the more important thing is our investment in public schools. That I think is where we should focus. We should focus on building our public schools into excellent institutions. We should focus in making sure that the people who teach there are qualified. We should make sure that the standards in those public schools are high enough for them to compete so that our children don't have to come from Grand Crew and go to Morovia to pay high tuition. And that's one of the things we have tasked the Minister of Transportation with, and we hope within the next six years or during her tenure at the ministry, she can get that accomplished. Twenty-two-nine, I am a proud CD Shen. My political leader is George Wu Yan, and I expect he will reveal my political leader. My role between now and twenty-two-nine, which is far, is that at the end of the day, when I exit the speakership, you can be able to say, he was a damn good speaker. If you can't say he was a damn good speaker, you at least say he was a good speaker. That's where my concentration is. So to wait for business, you know, we have. We've had a lot of problems with the US Embassy on visas. Imagine, I had a young lawmaker who had passed, who championed the War Crimes Code resolution. See it through, where I was accused of paying lawmakers, nobody gave me a cent. But he see it through, he worked hard on it, and it was a piece of legislation that the Americans supported. Imagine if they go into conference in America, they got denied visa? I mean, this is just crazy. We have, through official and unofficial diplomatic channel, we asked the Minister of Foreign Affairs to officially relay to the Ambassador to the, of the United States to Liberia, our displeasure in the manner in which visas are disposed. And when I met the Ambassador in our first meeting, that's one of the issues I raised. When we met the, the US delegation that came from Congress, we raised that issue also. It is an issue that we have to, they're complaining, only people don't go back. And Liberia has the, one of the highest rates of people not returning when they are issued visa. Somehow we have to resolve that, and we have been engaged on it and will continue to look at it. I do not have an answer for that because the US Embassy remains, we concentrate on its responses and its answers. They've lightened up a little bit on official travel, but in most cases, they do to this deny. Next question.
Thank you. So next group of people, again, guys, what is eight-thirty-three? As you heard the speaker say, nine o'clock. So Fragman, Lloyd Topas, CIAE Williams, and Tenan Lamu. I'm going to Mr. Tenan here. So what I'm going to suggest to you guys is, can we let Tenan go first? There's been too many men, so let's give some women chance.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You say I lack about the budget, that's my more concerned area. Having worked at, what I'm always speaking, one of the largest Medicaid companies in the US, K2 Mercy. I understand how the budget process work, because it seems to be like a controversial between the upper house and the lower house. So don't you think it's about time that we are ready to zero base budgeting versus going back to the previous way of budgeting, knowing that a lot of things have changed, the paradigm shift and all of that? Because, and then it's about time we have an ERP system, where we have a centralized budget system, where all the initiatives, whatever they enter, the like, the, the, the data budget process is monitored, versus just having a standard new system. That way, it's highly monitored, it's highly centralized, and highly, you know, it's difficult. You see the visual, you see the visual lines, and you have the track forty. So I think it's about time, look at how things have processed over the period of time. I think it's about time that we all go back to zero base, protecting Mr. Speaker. What do you think? Thank you.
Thank you. I am a founding member of the CDC, first chairman of the presidency. So I just want to let you know. But, Mr. Speaker, I listened to you, and there's a reason why I made myself number twenty-four. You guys have been listening to a lot, a lot of people. But again, I want to tell you thank you first for coming to EA. You are one of the highest in the official of the, of the country. We got a lot of leaders that when they get a letter, they don't want to come here. Eli never came. Joe Yar, David Boye, he never came here to talk to us, so I want to say thank you. What I listened to, when I listened to you answering these questions, our country is at a point of no return. We need drastic measures, we need cuts. Listening to you is like trying to explain why these things are this way and they are that way. In this country, you pay five thousand dollars on non-actual taxes. You are not rich, but you're not poor either, in this country. And I know you later will fall. Mr. Speaker, what is it you, as a speaker of this fifty-four or fifty-four, what is it that you think you can do to change the direction of this country? Because if you continue on that path that we're going, we never going to change. If we continue on this path, where everything will connect, we use it to pay ourselves. There's nothing to reinvest into the country, there's nothing for school, there's nothing for hospital, there's nothing for road. We continue on that path, we never move. So I want to ask you, because I know, I know you, you took this speaker's shape, I know you ran because you want to do something. What is it that you think, when it happened in our country, will change course? And we have enough money to fix our road? Because even if you, if you, if you do what you're doing, if you don't have roads, if, if, when it rains and nobody can, I'm from Grange. And I went to Liberia twenty-two, it took me twenty-four hours from Morovia to get those ready, twenty-four hours. You get on the road, the car break down, they say, oh, we got to go for the mechanic in that town. Then the mechanic comes, then he take the box and take it back to the town and weather it, then bring it back and put it back on the car, then you go. When our news ready, I have to come and deal with the mechanic after you go with me. And they are, they are to grant that, they are to your way back. Mr. Speaker, the country needs help. And you have to do something. I'm asking you, what is it, what do you think you can do? What measure can we take that will save our country? Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Speaker. Well, I'm here to follow, I represent the Owe to All Rivers Movement Platform. It's a low movement that speaks to before the masses. Also, I'm here as an individual, CIAE Williams is my name. I have a background in civil engineering. I've worked extensively on highways, roadways, bridges, and things of that nature. I had very opportunity and privilege to be in Liberia several weeks. As a matter of fact, three weeks approximately a month. And I took a particular interest in the road condition. You live in Rehah, and I saw the RIA, because I don't know what classification is that road. But that road is a death trap, and you plow that road every day from home to work. One of the instances, I think I made a video on that, there's a median barrier that has no tenewater. You have just, that's just one. You have your roadway that has been paved, you don't even have temporary pavement markings to delineate which lane, the motorist who's going in that direction staging his lane, and the motorist who's coming staging his lane. So now, to take a little bit farther, you talk about budget. What are you doing? Now, you live not to take a step farther, just your community, as long as you're living in a producing house. Unfortunately, they got burned. But look next to you, see your neighbor's house or your neighbor's house. So criticism, first of all, is the price you pay for leadership. Dr. Richard R. Richard once said, he said, if you, the day you're unwilling to be criticized is the day you don't fit to be anybody. So you using your office, right next to you, is a zinc shop. People building an alleyway. What are you doing to use your office to make sure you improve the quality of life of those people? And in fact, the brother just talked about the roads condition. What are you doing to ensure that those roads are being improved? They are safer for motorists, they are safer for you and the citizen population. Thank you.
I want to add one more question, again, it's eight-forty. The speaker leaves at nine, at eight-fifty, we want to shut it down. And as we said, if you did not get the opportunity to ask your question, pass it on, we'll pass it on to the speakers' people, and you will be, and you will be responded to. We, we still have about one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight people on the list. I don't think we get exhausted, but we'll try our best. I have one more question, Mr. Speaker, if you don't mind. That will come from Mr. Harrison Gifford. Did I pronounce it right, Gifford?
Mr. Speaker, my name is Harrison Gifford. My question is, we have been reading and seeing in the Liberian media that there have been a lot of illegal mining that have been going on in the country. And the people in the communities, they illegal mining, but they don't benefit. Even the Liberian government benefited from the mining. So what do you have in plan to control or to stop all the illegal mining?
Okay, so I'll start with Tenan's question. Tenan, you know, I was talking to my brother last night, interestingly, I will say to you that maybe you talked to him. Because the first thing he said is, why don't we go to zero base budgeting? So of all the questions that I received tonight, So, of all the questions that I received tonight, I'm most prepared for that one, because I had a study on it last night. Uh, we can't do zero-based budgeting because it requires the kinds of assumptions to make the stuff from scratch that I do not believe our system is prepared to handle. But let me tell you what we should do. We should do more program budgeting. Where we decide what the program is, if it is the, if the program is to build ten health sectors, uh, uh, ten clinics across the country, and to make them viable, and that will cost ten million dollars. Let's spend it and audit that process. I think if we move from line item to program base, then we have more accountability and see more of our development dollars. So, I will trade you that one. We do have a central budgeting system called the IFNIS system, where you can go on it. Uh, my staff deny me access to be able to look to see how government money is spent by Waze and Mees and others who, uh, oversee that process. They have their own user, uh, information. They are able to log in the system, that is why my staff was able to tell me that your budget is showing five point nine million dollars. For us to go in there and say, no, we didn't spend this, we didn't spend that, we didn't spend other. If we didn't have that system, the next time you see the, the outturn, it would have had that figure in it. And if we go to try to correct the figure after the fact, people would have accused me of covering. So, we do have the IFNIS system, and it, it, it works. We need to maybe have more people line up and use the system, who are decisions, decision-makers in the government. Uh, the gentleman talked about me being the first official to come here. Um, again, previous officials that came here, they, they got their heads handed out to them. Uh, I was warned about the brutality of this audience, so I can understand why people don't want to come here. Uh, but I took the risk, and I think when I leave for here tonight, I'll be able to break that, our face of Philadelphia audience. Um, we talk about what can be done, was the question. Economic expansion. So, I think operating a seven hundred and thirty-eight million dollar budget on a one-plus-billion economy and needs, it's not going to work for us. We got to bite the bullet and do what the Guineans and some of other countries have done. We got to take the iron ore, we got to take the oil pound, we got to take the forestry, and we pile it into something called a sovereign wealth fund. We got to take that, those assets, put them on the stock exchange, get about a billion and a half, or two billion for them, and develop our infrastructure. When that infrastructure is developed, the country will open. When I say infrastructure, you're talking about roads, you're talking about electricity, you're talking about all of the ingredients that make those things work. Without that, to be able to take seven hundred and thirty-eight million dollars a year, in which a lot of that is recovery expenditure or salaries, okay, it's going to be tough. The movement, the discretionary, uh, 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 the discretionary event we have in the legislature is probably, when you look at it, is around twenty to thirty million. So, by the time, as I said, you know, you elect the president, the president come with promises. You will do X, you will do that. By the time he decides to do that, that's fifty to sixty million a year. Where you going to get that money from? So, unless we decide how we get out of the bubble of a budget constraint and move towards a sovereign wealth fund, where we can, we mortgage these resources. Or you want, uh, uh, um, for lack of a better, mountain, you want Olagisi, yeah, fine. You can develop it over the next ten, fifteen, twenty years. But we taking the money from Olagisi, Olagisi now. Okay, we're not waiting for you to come, we are concession, to develop it, and, you know, you take him all iron ore out, and all of that. With that sovereign wealth fund, which the last time during the Ellisian presidency administration, when they came, they were looking at, you know, and did the analysis at the National Investment Commission, they were looking at an intake of two billion dollars on the spot. So, just imagine, that was what, ten, fifteen years ago? If you do a sovereign wealth fund now, you will get more. Ghana did that. And people will tell you, say, oh, but then Ghana has defaulting and what have you. Yeah, but are they going to take the Ghana airport? They're going to take all that road infrastructure? No, all Ghana did is now re, retooling those debts to be able to continue to pay it. Okay, but the infrastructure is there, and it is the infrastructure that increases economic activity. You talk about the southeast, you talk about, you talk about Grange, you don't want that, we don't talk about the forty-five thousand, I don't want to hear it usually. Because I take at least five pickups to my district every time I go. And when I get there, I leave maybe two or three there. During the elections, I made a mistake. I'm saying, I can't afford our forty-five thousand dollar Toyota Hilos. These guys brought these new pickups in town called Tata. Okay, and I was so happy with myself, because my American daughter that is now working in Liberia decided she wants to go on a camping trail to Grancro. We took the Tata. That Tata broke down, new Tata, broke down twenty-seven thousand dollars, broke down right in the middle where no network walls go into Grancro. So, the key is infrastructure. Selling resources, there's infrastructure, that it take ten, fifteen years, twenty years, thirty years to develop those resources. I think that's the key to economic expansion. Other than that, I'm not an economist, and I don't know how to do other metrics to find you more money. Uh, that will require a think tank of people better than me, which are those of you in this room. The road and public works. You know, yeah, I have, I have, we reconstructing the house, thanks for all those who prayed for us. I had a pretty decent house in the rehab. Yeah, and in rehab, not all of us equal, okay? But I'm not going to say it's my fault that somebody has a zinc shack next to me. What I did decide to do consciously, we could have moved to Marshall in the suburbs, where we don't have to be bothered with those people. But I chose to live with them, among them, okay? So, when I stepped out of my, as a public policymaker, when I stepped out of my gate in the afternoon, in the car, I see and talk to them, and see what their problems are. I could not afford to put my dream house in Marshall, where I don't have any neighbors. I, I, when I leave work, I go home, there is no problem. I'm right there in rehab, where they be playing the music, they be blasting right in my, my window. My wife be getting dressed, I myself be getting dressed, they got one church, flaming fire. That guy got the biggest soundbags, he, he, yeah, yeah, he got, I don't know, somehow, for the churches, they don't, they don't sell special kind of soundbag, and very, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, they got special soundbag, when I got blast that thing Sunday morning, I myself I get home and go to church. So, you know, I, I, I'm not, I'm, I'm not, yes, I have an obligation to see how they live and live with them so that we can see how we make their life better. I'm proud that I built my dream house in rehab. Uh, I regret that it got burned, we are building it again because we moving back to rehab, because I love my neighbors. I, I, you know, I love hanging with them, I love coming out, when they kind of explain someone their problems to me, or when they kind of debate their issues, I love walking to the, the shop across the street to hang out with them. I like to do that. I'm a public policymaker, that's how I learn, uh, what the price of gas is, that's how I learn what, uh, rent people are looking for, and those kind of things, and that will start. Uh, illegal mining, I think the solution to this problem is, government got to put the resources in to stop it, and stop it permanently. Have the infrastructure to license illicit mining. It is destroying our environment, it is destroying our children. Next question.
All right, guys, it's eight, um, fifty. Uh, we have a little bit of great speaker from the speaker, I assume. So, um, we will take two more questions, actually, three more questions, and then a question was also, a question was also texted this morning.
Dino, let's take that, then I will close.
We'll take these questions?
Yeah, Dino, let me take it, and we'll close.
Okay, all right. So, let's take this question. So, the next people are Marie Carver, Sarah, I know I butchered it, I'm so sorry. Chris Sua, Sino Najee Taylor. Najee, sorry, that they look like white to me, sorry. Sino Najee Taylor, is that you? All right, okay. Um, and, uh, and then after that, we actually have a journalist on the list. Uh, this group of journalists, two who want to ask questions, who will go to them, so. So, uh, Marie, Chris, Sino Najee, and Aisha Koo.
Good evening, honourable speaker and guests, welcome to EA. My name is Marie Walokasha, National Vice President of Sanlo County Association of Citizens in America. My question is concerning education. Uh, I would like to know if there's a public labyrinth in Liberia. If not, what are the plans to, to build a public labyrinth? Thank you.
Got the point. Good evening, honourable speaker, my name is Christopher Sua. My question is now policy driving is very short, more personal. Uh, I'm sure you've been in government for a while now. My, I would like to ask you, do you think if, few years from now, say, ten, fifteen, twenty years from now, do you think history will be kind to your record in government? And my second question is, do you consider yourself as boss to your fellow lawmakers? Because I found your concern all of you related and unknown existing matters, you all do have one vote. So, I would like to see clarification, why some of the customers are referring to you as their boss? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sino Najee Taylor. I am a first-generation Liberian-American. I have only been able to visit Liberia one time in my lifetime. And I do want to say thank you for coming. This has been a very eye-opening experience. We don't get the chance to speak, to speak to our Speaker of the House as Americans. So, I want to thank you and show gratitude for your coming to allow us to ask questions. This is something that doesn't happen, and I was a sitting councilperson for Lansdowne. So, I want to thank you for coming out. I want to thank the Liberian Association of Pennsylvania for creating an environment where we are able to ask questions of our leaders. My question is, how can you support first-generation Liberian-Americans involved in politics so that we can show that us, your product, because we are a product, you know, a pharmacist, a realtor, and a politician? How can we get more involved to create a pathway from America to Liberia, and from Liberia to America? Because we are grateful.
Hello, honourable speaker, my name is Aisha. I have twenty questions. But I'm going to ask you three of those questions. I'll ask three. My first question is, how is the money that is going to the representative for district and monitor? How do you monitor the money? The next question I want to ask you is, Liberia, as we can see, I was just in Liberia in August, is really busy now, and Russia is taking over the nation. Is there any preventative method that you got have in place, or to be in place for the nation? Because we don't want the, that happen to you and other people, to start with our people, the, the water situation. So, I want to know, is there anything that you are thinking about? In place, uh, for flow? And then my last question is, uh, land issue is big in Liberia, people are building everywhere. Is there anything in your policy? I know every time people talk about it, but we go back to Liberia, we see people building everywhere, and we see people, taking people land and stuff. How is that being forced and effective as a speaker? Thank you.
Thank you. So, as the speaker suggested, we just knocked up the list, we got one and three more on it, so we just knock it up, and you go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, so, Alita, is that you? Sam Gibson and Ahmed Sharif, is that you, Sharif? You Gibson, Sam Gibson, Ahmed Sharif, sorry.
Uh, good evening to everyone, and good evening to the Speaker of the Fifty-Fifth National Legislature. My name is Alita Enba, I'm the calling youth chapperson of CDC USA. Uh, my, I have a concern, and it's not more of a caution, and thank you for your proceeding so far as the Speaker of the Legislature. Uh, Mr. Speaker, my concern with the CSA boss attending to the job of our federal Liberia, based on the constitutions and some violations that link to that, I would love that you, as a speaker, go to your body to wish and take that into consideration, to see how they can find a means and way that our people, because there are less, you know, private sector jobs in Liberia. Most of our people depend on government job, though it is not enough for everybody. So, I want you guys to see that as a concern and need to address. Also, it's, uh, for district number one, Masalado County, we have issue with our district because it's large in length. So, you know, you guys addressing our district to be a sanitary district or concern for our people for district number one will be something that we highly recommend. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Sam?
Good evening, Mr. Speaker. My name is Frederick Sam Gibson. I am the former National Chairman, United Party USA, twenty-ten to twenty-twelve. But I have a few questions for you. Uh, one first question has to do with, I listened to you when you spoke about an off-budget spending, and that was played during the Fifty-Fifth. In the Fifty-Fourth, you served as the Deputy Speaker, along with a colleague who is also a member of the CDC. One mechanism was used this time to play the fifteen million as opposed to the ninety million you mentioned. Two, in Liberia today, jobs are not easy to find. The young people are struggling every day. When they sneeze, we catch a cold over here, because every day, we receive phone calls from people that are struggling for health, for food, for school, for rent. Landlords in Liberia are charging one-year rent to people that do not even have jobs. And that's a standard procedure in Liberia. What will you do to mitigate that circumstance? To bring some relief to our people? Another issue has to do with road connectivity. Quite recently, I think about two days ago, I watched, uh, a presentation for the Cavala River, a project that has been monitoring by Echo Wars, to build a bridge over the Cavala River. And according to information that were revealed, that bridge will cost fifteen million dollars. If we are looking into the future, because they're trying to connect the entire West Africa, why is it that we cannot prevail on those people? Instead of one-lane or two-lane bridge, it can be four-lane, giving us the opportunity to expand the road in the future? Because every day, we will need, after the coastal highway is done, I hope that happens, there will be an opportunity for us to expand our road network. Again, I have so many different questions to ask you, but it is important that I just stop it for now, and I, I hope to meet you. And one thing, I must commend you for taking the bold step to stand before us today. I ran a popular radio station, radio program here, The Voice by the African Connection. We also had a scholarship by Temple University Jazz FM. Every time a government official come to visit his town, they refuse to appear, not even what they, uh, the time or the way to do, so I must commend you for that, and I hope you continue that work. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, last question actually was texted, Mr. Speaker. No, he does not have a question. He has Um, last question was texted, uh, Mr. Speaker, and has to do with the yellow regimes. I don't know if you have, Mr. Director, about the yellow regimes, but I don't know if you have, Mr. Director, about the yellow machines, but the question is, what is the current status of the yellow machines that were brought into the country? What is the role of the House and the National Legislature in dealing with that situation? Those were the questions, but my brother here wanted to make a comment, so I don't know if you want to take the questions before his comments?
You go ahead, make it.
Thank you. Mr. Speaker, welcome to the city of Rorolala. Uh, I just want to provide a little bit of clarity on the national budget and how it is put together. Because I think in my own capacity, I have previously worked with budget committee and have to defend budgets. Uh, the Liberian budget, the current budget they are working with now, which is what? $738 million. The fact of the matter is, out of that $738, about $696 million is supposed to come from taxes within the country. Now, uh, out of that, something you call revenue taxes, which is $556 million, and the other one, $144 million is about non-tax revenues. Now, that brings the total to $669 million. There is another $42 million that is left, and that is where all the countries in the world, including our great United States, which is for the $2 million. And a lot of times, that money doesn't even come. But here is a funny thing about the budget also. The revenue generation sometimes doesn't even come. The revenue is not generated, let's be honest. But now, because of politics, sometimes we tell you, hey, we have exceeded our goals. But a lot of times, those revenues are really not there. So that actually has to lead to a process where they have to do something called recasting. Now they are looking for money from here to pay for this. So at the end of the year, a lot of services are really not paid for, like gasoline, people's who's supposed to get other things, education. So basically, what I'm trying to say, and out of that money, the priority is to pay salaries. Salary in the previous government was what? 600, I mean, uh, $294 million. So you have to meet that first before you even begin to pay for any other. That is what I would refer to as, is a very, very complicated, in fact, it's a simplistic picture of a complicated reality. Let's look at it that way. So I just wanted to throw that in there so that, you know, we all know that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, thank you so much for that information. Public library. Let me choose my words carefully. There is no public library I'm aware of, because the minute I say there's none, somebody will call me from the Ministry of Education and say, "Mr. Speaker, you didn't know X, Y, Z." So I'm not aware, I will find out. I doubt if there's any. Liberian American involvement, I think Liberian American involvement should start with uh, pilgrimage back to Liberia. To see the landscape, to see the atmosphere, to see the culture, to see what is being inherited, and to see the possibilities. If that can be organized, I think it will be the first step to getting first generation Americans and Liberians to go back to Liberia, inform a bond that can help us all. Legislative project money use, okay. So if you are familiar with the American Congress, it's no different from what is called legislative earmarks. Except now, the legislative earmark is a generalized sum of $100,000. The lawmaker goes and say, uh, executive branch, I want to build a school here, I want to build a clinic here, I want X here. After having consultation with his constituents, the executive branch goes and bid those projects and fund those projects, and are accountable for the spending of that project. Not a dime go in the lawmaker's pocket. Uh, erosion, you know, the quite the issue here is that [inaudible]. Okay? These people are building in the waterways, they are building in the alleyways. So when you grade the waterway, when you, when you, when you, when you fill up the wetlands, there's nowhere else for the water to go, or to be like almost a river in front of the city hall. Okay? When you try to move them, oh, they are doing bad to the poor people, where the people will live? But these are some of the consequences that we have to review and we have to look at. Probably what I'm saying, disaster management, our joint task force, uh, they are looking at how to deal with the wetlands, uh, and the flood issue, and hopefully, before we take on the budgetary for the next exercise, we'll be able to see them come about. Land issues, hey, I'm a lawyer, I refuse to do land litigation in Liberia. It's just too complicated, it's just too messy, uh, it gets to the court, it drags on, and all kinds of bad things happen. I don't think the legislature can be blamed for that one. We've passed all of the land rights laws that the International Partnership would work. Uh, it's now up to the courts to see how they expedite the processes. This here is CSA boss, I think everybody knows my famous altercation with CSA boss. Uh, I think we missed an important step, uh, in not having a civil service commission. Paying our attention with the CSA boss, Senator [inaudible] commission, the executive branch agency. I think the necessary compromise is, this is something that has been ongoing since the 1986 constitution, and the government have refused, the legislature have refused to create a civil service commission. And so rather than shut it down and create distortions, uh, we are working now on the legislation to align the CSA with the constitution. I chose this question to be last, let me see. Off-budget spending, how come I'm talking about off-budget spending now, and I did not talk about it when the CDC government in power? It's a question of how the legislature is organized. As Chair of Judiciary and as Deputy Speaker, I was not considered one of those in the speaker's leadership or inner circle, so I didn't have the opportunity to work on those issues. That's the speaker's prerogative, on who he allows into space and he allows to work with. I was not privileged to be one of those. I came into this office, I'm learning about this budget process, and the more I learn about it, the more I try to expose, and then we try to fix. Jobs, rent, and roads, that's the economic question of Liberia, and as I said, we resolve these things by giving jobs to our people, we expand the economic power if we develop a sovereign wealth fund. Yellow machines, every day they blast it on the house, but it never gave us credit. When the whole yellow machine started, there are only one house that someone, the executive branch on the yellow machines, it was the House of Representatives. When we someone, the president advised us to say, "We hear about this yellow machine business, you can't explain it." Immediately that night, 10 o'clock, I was in the office, I received a letter from the president. Explain it to me, what the yellow machine issue was? I do not generally do this job, I don't take the approach that some people think I must, a radical approach. This is the [inaudible] Liberia, he writes me a letter, he explains something, I'm not going to tell him he lied. I'm going to take his word for it, he's the president. So we took the letter in good faith. In the meantime, the legislature and the executive would be playing cat and mouse about the yellow machines. When the yellow machine coming? Nobody can tell us. When the yellow machine, nobody. And when we were looking at the recast, we saw $4.5 billion in public works. Somebody said, "A yellow machine running there." We asked, "What the $4.5 billion for?" They couldn't explain it, we took it out. Okay? And it was smartly say, "Oh, road fund is for roads, and roads include road equipment." So the $4.5 they took from us for our yellow machine, we probably go get it out of the road fund. Can I start that? No, that's what road fund is for. The yellow machines issue, I think it was, it was mishandled by the executive. We all want yellow machines, but they must be procured. The other thing I think the executive has to be careful of, people who give in gifts and then come back with concessions, right, request. I wouldn't do it that way. Uh, I think recently somebody donated police cars, they're not here, he has some interest. So when you're doing a concession agreement, the signature fee, you can say, the signature fee for this, rather than $10 million going to all those who participated in it, and some to the country, you can say, "Okay, we'll take this signature fee, do her a [inaudible] yellow machines." That's a legitimate transaction. You can say, "I filed this concession, we'll take 20 police cars as a signature fee, that's a legitimate, uh, transaction." But to take a gift in advance of coming to present a concession, it troubles me a little bit. So, but the executive haven't gone to the second step, and so we still have to give the benefit of the doubt. I am not one of those persons who want to make assumptions all the way on what is happening in the government and how badly it's corrupt, uh, to be able to do my job. I think we take it one step at a time. I chose this question, which was not the last question, to be the last closing. Somebody asked if I will be remembered after I leave. Look. We were small growing up, and we were running behind, [inaudible] and [inaudible]. We're excited about change in Liberia. It is the most difficult thing I've experienced in my life. I can tell you that this job is easier, because not only the criticism, the criticism not bad, it's the suspicion. Okay? Everything you do, they suspect you. Okay? My, 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 my son was graduating, we passed the budget, I jumped on the plane to come to witness my son's graduation, they say, "Oh," they speak out to [inaudible]. Amen. He took $1 million, he [inaudible]. You know, that's what my colleagues writing in, 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 in the chat room. It's a tough job. The Liberian people, they go easily to believe that, yeah, they got $20 million, they took it and they eat it. $20 million, pile it up. If I ate $2 million or $20 million, I would resign and go relax somewhere. It doesn't happen that way. I think I see mostly lawmakers and public service who get up every day and try to do their best. The reason why Jerry Yobba will say, "My boss," is not because I'm his boss, it's because I'm the first among equal and run the House of Representatives, and it's just a term of endearment. He's just trying to be respectful when he say, "My boss," he's not being figurative or literal. So don't take it that way, okay? How will history do? Let me, let me tell you, let me tell you what drives me in the manner and approach I take to government, because being opposition speaker, you'll say, "Oh, you know, it should be H, it should be X, it should be Y." Why I moderate my stance on a lot of these things? Change in Liberia has to be managed. I'm a student of 1979. In 75 to 79, Willetobe was at his most progressive. They can change in our country. The conservatives felt they were moving too slow, I mean, the conservatives felt they were moving too fast. The progressives felt they were moving too slow. What happened? We came. And when we came, are we happy with the results? 40 years later, we can't even have a Liberia that happened during Willetobe time. Okay? So, yes, the result of that is our democracy we have today. What else do we have? Was it necessary? We would have arrived at the democracy we Willetobe, maybe 10 years later, to sacrifice 44, 44 years and 300,000 deaths? So I try to manage change. We came to power as speaker, but all the people that came were not new. This is the first time in the history of the Liberian legislature, where we actually have blocks. Usually blocks are created during the election of the speaker or during the removal of the speaker. This time, we have block, rear permanent block, the rescue block, the CDC block, and the independence. How do I manage the house? Okay? These are three competing interests. I can walk there and command there. Okay? I have to go to where the interests are. And that change, yes, it will be slow. The first time, I know you all are listening to the stuff, there were three more, I think it was April also, Jerry? When the building was shaking, they come and move the speaker. The building, I mean, was actually shaking, everybody was scared. We come and move that man. Why? Because I signed an audit contract with the GSA. That's to tell you, the people who don't go audit, they are also in the village, and they are also powerful. I'm not going to say, "Okay, yeah, if anyone audit, I go, you may, I reign, be speaker, just to walk away at the first instance." No. So I compromise. Okay, you're going to be going on audit, okay, we delay the audit, let have more conversations on it. The audit is now underway. So I have to have different approaches on how we manage to change. And I suspect President Baka will have the same issues that I have. You look at the people who were you in the trenches, they not do something silly that should remove them from their committee? This is a typical operating, "Well, maybe not, I'll tear for you." How do you manage that? Yes, it's true. So the change we seek, I only want us to start to begin to change the system and recognize it. As I said, this is the first time the process of the budget was open. This was the first time the budget went to hands up, I mean, to, to, to yes and no voting, rather than here or there. They call your name, you say yes. They call your name, you say no. That's the budget process we now have. Each lawmaker have five minutes to discuss the budget. The budget process is open. Okay? Somebody went in executive section, when they talk about off-budget spending, they say that national security is out. I was in session, I saw all the lawmakers running to my office, I said, "Monsieur, I make you fair." Oh, Susan, so person say, "Off-budget spending, the national security." No, 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 it's not national security, we will discuss it, we will put it on the table. So those are changes that you may not recognize, but we see on a daily basis. And the threat to change is there. Okay? You move too fast, you derail the system. You move too slow, you become all of the same. I do not worry about history, I do not look to see whether or not what will happen. I only get up every day, pray to do my best, and hope that history will judge me kindly. Thank you very much, you beautiful.
We can do better than that. The speaker earned his bragging rights, like he came, he saw, and he conquered failure. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So, um, the speaker said, if you all wanted to contact him, uh, he has his WhatsApp numbers, and his chief of staff has given us information on how to contact him. Uh, Madame Helen Seion Howard is the Chief of Staff of the Office of the 55th Legislative Speaker. Her telephone number is 231-776-984565. And, uh, we have patient best man, her phone number also is 231-88001833. These numbers and email addresses will be posted in the WhatsApp chat room, uh, so you can be able to contact the speaker. Without further ado, we will now call to the podium, uh, our board member, Mr. Greens, to do a vote of thanks.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. For on behalf of the board, the Liberian Association of Pennsylvania, and the President, we want to extend our thanks and appreciation to those who left at tourist to be present here tonight. Madam President, and Mr. Speaker, and honorable Yobba, thank you for taking up your time this evening. I believe every participant in the hall tonight, they are actually feeling the God inside, they didn't know about Liberia. And Mr. Speaker, Pennsylvania welcomes you all the time. We are looking forward, if I keep your office open, you'll soon get a invitation from us, where we are dedicating our Madam President, and thank you for being so open. And ladies and gentlemen, for on behalf of all the board, please drive safely. We want to thank you all, we want to thank you all, I would not turn this room to the President, I don't know.
I'm sorry, thank you, thank you so much, thanks everybody. You know, the speaker deserves a louder round of applause than that, for being patient with you all here today, taking all your questions and thoughts and fight. May I have your attention, please? I want to thank the speaker for that, and we deserve so much more. And so, before we And so, before we go, before the vote of thanks, I needed to say, I wanted to say one or two things, okay? For us all to have a little recap. But the board member keep making the vote of thanks. But I want to say thank you to our elections commissioners, if they are here, if a member of the election commissioner is here, says my unique strategy of this conference. Thank you for conducting the past elections, who now have new board members. And the executives are going back for the second term. I wanted to let the public...